All right, Mr. Mayor, we are live and ready and Jack is here now.
Okay, sounds good. We'll go ahead and call the meeting to order. This is a meeting of the Saldovia City Council Wednesday, August 6th, 2025. Time is 4:07 PM. This is a work session. And we do have five council members present. So we do have a quorum and we have a couple of discussion topics tonight. The first one is item B1 ordinance 25-09. An ordinance to the city council of the city of Saldovia amending Chapter 18.20, definitions, Chapter 18.52, commercial business district, Chapter 18.24, zoning districts and repealing and reenacting, Chapter 18.70, the land use table. Um, the second item on our agenda is draft ordinance 26-XX, which is an ordinance to the city council of the city of Saldovia, Alaska, amending Saldovia municipal code, Chapter 8.06 for abatement of public nuisances and abandoned property. So we'll go ahead and start off with item B1, which is our ordinance 25-09 regarding the commercial business district. And I don't know, Liz or Heidi, whoever wants to take it away.
Yes, thank you, Mr. Mayor. Uh, so this has been a long running discussion between the planning commission and the Saldovia City Council regarding the commercial business district. Uh, the Saldovia City Council held a work session on May 14th. And if you want, you can follow along with me. I'm on a memo on page three. I have on the memo on page three. Uh, so just a little background there. There was a council work session on May 14th, 2025. Uh, the Saldovia City Council requested the following items be addressed in that ordinance. And that was the administrative permit, uh, including that definition of administrative permit and the review administrative permit procedure, updating the administrative permit application and verifying current administrative permit holders. Uh, ensuring that those permits are non-transferable and uh, potentially including on the permit abbreviated risk assessment for neighboring property impact. Uh, so you will see on page, well, before I, I'm gonna just backtrack real quick. Um, one of the, nope, I'm not, I, I'm not gonna backtrack. So on page seven of the packet, you'll see a newly implemented, uh, suggested, recommended Chapter 18.18 administrative approvals and permits. Uh, and what this does is uh, it provides that process for those permits, but it also um, designates a difference between an administrative approval and an administrative permit. And that's because we do have um, some other permits in place that can meet the needs of an administrative permit uh, that instead of duplicating the process. So the application 1818015, I would, I won't read out everything, but um, basically what we're saying is that an administrative approval such as a rental lease, business license, building permit, or other designated city application may constitute an application for administrative approval. So if, for instance, somebody wants to rent a kiosk on the public property and it's listed on the land use table as an administrative approval and the city council and approves a lease for that kiosk, or the city manager approves a um, a short-term rental application for that kiosk as provided in the fee schedule, then that constitutes that administrative approval, right? We've said that this is okay to happen on public property. We already have a process in a place to approve that. If they're granted that rental um, or that lease or business license, building permit, something of a matter typically on public land that's already has a process for approval, then they have administrative approval. The administrative permit um, is its own form that should be supplied by the city. Um, and it doesn't have to be the same administrative permit form for every administrative permit. They could have different types of administrative permits. Um, but currently, right now, if you turn to page eight, we just have the one. And that's at the top of the page, long-term residential rentals, administrative permit. So that also refers back to under when the newly renamed, if this is approved, central business district. Um, the long-term residential rentals are established in SMC 1852050 and then listed on the land use table and SMC 187040, so that you are referred back to those sections of code. If the accepted application is in accordance with 1852050, again, that's the central business district um, establishment of the long-term residential rentals, then the city manager or their designate may issue approval. So hopefully that cleans up the process a little bit for you guys, since we expanded it and it's no longer necessarily just long-term residential rentals. This provides the avenue uh, for other types of administrative permits as they may come about. Um, though right now it is uh, just those long-term residential rentals. And then the other items under the land use table, if you look on page 24, 25, and 26, well, 24 is really just the headers, 25 and 26. Um, our business general happening on Publix is administrative approval. And let me see, I should have highlighted these, sorry. Manufacturing, fabricating, assembly, small business, small-scale custom is administrative approval uh, for public. So those two are both public. Um, and they are approved through other forms through administration. And then that AP, why is that not popping out to me? Oh, yep, is under lodging, long-term residential rental at the top of the page 26. So those are the three that are currently in there right now. Before I move on, any questions? Oh, and one more thing, administrative approval is also very simply defined on page nine under definitions. Number three, administrative approval and permit, an approval may be made by the city manager or their designate under SMC 1818 without public notice. Any questions on this process? Mike? There you go.
Now, do we have, do we have any industrial zone property here?
We do.
Where is it?
It's located down by the Eternal Buzz and the boatyards.
That's considered industrial.
Yep, and the water, the uh,
What's the difference between industrial and commercial then in this?
That's a great question. Um, so I can grab the code book, but yeah, the map is behind me as well, is what Clark Diamond was pointing out. Um, so under Title 18, industrial 1848. And of course, we have a couple of different commercial districts. And this is probably a bigger conversation to have when we looking at zoning as a whole um, through the comprehensive plan and then moving forward. Uh, but currently, the purpose of industrial uh, is this district is located and designed to provide an area suitable for the development of a viable industrial base for the community. Land adjacent the shoreline and located in industrial zone shall be reserved for water-dependent and marine uses.
So the, the building and the boatyards, that's industrial there?
Yep, the value-added building, the boatyards, um, Eternal Buzz, that whole area is industrial. Uh, though Eternal Buzz does have a um, conditional use. So, um, but then there's several commercial districts and the purpose under the commercial best district, potentially future central business district um, as it exists is on page 23 of your packet. And currently, the commercial business district is established to provide an area for convenient, attractive and concentrated commercial development. Regulations applying to the zone are designed to encourage a compact group of business of the type which are mutually beneficial and located close enough together to encourage walk-in trade. Uh, there is an updated purpose that this district is designed, and it's similar, just a rewording. This district is designed to be a compact, convenient and pedestrian, um, which is maybe the, some of the newer language in there. Pedestrian-friendly, concentrated area for business, including but not limited to shopping, entertainment, office facilities, restaurants and tourist-oriented facilities and accommodation. District standards are designed to encourage a community center for Saldovia residents and visitors. So that's the updated language.
Thank you.
Okay, if we don't have anything else about administrative permits, um, we are going to update the website, um, which was a request, and that's actually something that's been on our radar for a while is to make a more robust planning website. I know, I think we mentioned that in the city manager's report at the last meeting, and that is something that Clark Diamond is working on. Um, so having that webpage that's designated for administrative permits and approvals. Um, and we'll let you know when that is followed, finished, followed up with. Uh, the next piece that was requested by the Saldovia City Council was to better define the dwelling definitions uh, to reflect residential status. So if you look on page, and I'm sorry, I didn't bookmark these before. Uh, 12. There is updated language um, that just hopefully better uh, includes, and then you'll see it on the land use table so that it it better reflects that when we're talking about these dwelling buildings, we are talking about residences and not businesses for long-term rentals or um, over, overnight stays. So 28 uh, is new, except it really is similar to 33 slash 31 towards the bottom. We did have a dwelling unit attached multi-residential, but we're nope, sorry, that was 33 and 31 are close to 29, sorry. 28 is new because we had in our code or in our land use table uh, separation, a designation between dwelling units that had four or under um, apartments and then dwelling units that had five or more. And um, in discussion with the commission and in discussion prior to that, um, with the subcommittee, it was called out that that's an important, an important distinguishment because of commercial codes. So making sure that we have a definition that calls out uh, that that difference distinguishes that difference. 28 is dwelling, large apartment complex residence, five or more units, a use or a building on a lot containing five dwelling units as residence for long-term rental units, see lodging, long-term residential rentals, for short-term accommodation rental units, see lodging, hotel, motel. So again, having those references and we tried to follow that throughout the code. So if there's anything missing, please let me know. Um, but making sure that we refer back. Another request was to include, and I believe this was from the commission, to just make sure that we are listing out what a smaller uh, under five uh, type of complex would be. And so our order, uh, sorry, definition 29, dwelling multifamily residential, which we did have a dwelling unit attached multi-residential, um, so similar. Uh, is uh, multifamily residential is a use or structure designed for or occupied by two or more families as a residence. Again, uh, duplex, triplex or fourplex are listed as examples. And then dwelling, single family. Um, so we had dwelling was already in there, but making sure that we're calling this out as a single family uh, is a use or residential structure designed to be affixed to a permanent foundation to be occupied by a family as a residence. This term includes pre-cap, prefabricated structures that are not constructed on a chassis uh, that is an integral part of the structure, so uh, mobile homes. And these are currently are not permitted uh, in the um, uh, commercial business district uh, because we do not allow single-family homes in that district. Uh, dwelling unit attached residential, it was updated uh, again for that residential uh, language, a use of residential unit consisting of a portion of a structure providing independent and complete cooking, living, sleeping and toilet facilities for a residence of a family. So this would be if you had an apartment in a commercial space or an apartment next to a long-term rental or a um, or a um, overnight rental, the apartment in the commercial business district is a secondary use. And then we removed out the, the old definition of dwelling unit and that dwelling unit attached multi-residential, which is still there, it's just, it's just reworded. And then, so if you look at page 19, we also updated the definition for residence and residential is a use and accessory use involving the occupation of a building for living, cooking, sleeping, and includes a single-family dwelling duplexes or multifamily dwelling. So trying to again emphasize that that is for family use. And family is one or more persons in our definitions as well, if you want to look at that. So it doesn't have to be more than one person. It's just um, how that language uh, is utilized in a lot of communities. And then if you look at page 25 for the land use table, you'll then see those definitions dwelling, large apartment complex, five or more units, dwelling multifamily residential, dwelling, single-family, dwelling unit attached residential. Um, and sorry that those headers didn't transfer over. So four over from the right is commercial business. And you follow that down dwelling, um, a large apartment complex residence, five or more is not permitted um, in commercial business district. Uh, you can have a, a apartment complex, five or more, and have it be long-term rentals or have it be um, overnight rentals or a mixture of the both, but you can't have a five or more apartment complex and have uh, it just be family without a business. Dwelling multifamily residential uh, is secondary, so you could have again, a business type rental, whether that's any type of business that's permitted or an overnight rental or um, long-term rental, and then you could have multiple apartments that are designated um, for just a family, you don't have two or three, that's fine. Uh, and then dwelling, single family, as I said, not permitted. We don't permit those types of structures um, in that zone. And that one does specify structure and use because of that. Um, and then dwelling unit attached residential, again, uh, single family uh, residence attached to a business of some type, including secondary, or sorry, including overnight or uh, long-term rentals is secondary. Does that clear that up for you, Mr. Mayor?
Um, no, I'm so wrapped around the axle right now. I, I swear to God, I, I, my mind is blown at the moment here, but that's, that's fine. It's probably just me. Uh, I am still stuck on, and I honestly have been so busy, I haven't had a chance to look at this and fully. And the only way anybody can make sense of this is literally try to take every one of these definitions and put something, put an example in your head. You literally have to do that, and then you have to take the, the definition and you have to go to the land use table to make sure that it makes sense.
Or you can come talk to the city office.
Well, that, that too, but I just want to make sure before we pass this, it makes perfectly good sense. I know we're not passing it tonight, but I want to make sure that it makes sense to everyone before, before they vote. Where I get wrapped around the axle is the fact that, so for example, let's just, and I'm not gonna dwell on this too long here, but if we is, is structure, structure, structure type versus use. Right? Structure can be just about anything that you, and you can, you can make any type of structure you want. It's how, it's the use that we are, are regulating in, in any of these districts effectively.
Not necessarily, Mr. Mayor, because we do regulate structures to an extent.
That's, that's what I want to be crystal clear on.
Exactly. So if you go back to your page 12, uh, the structure is still under dwelling, um, so dwelling multifamily residential and dwelling, single family, but it's not under attached residential. It's a use um, or residential unit, and it's not under the large complex. Because, and that's specified because we don't want um, or we haven't historically allowed those single-family structures to be built in that zone, because that's the, you have to have a, a business purpose, um, not just a residential purpose.
Right, but my point is, we do have, we do have a number of, I mean, and so that's where it gets a little into semantics here. But we do have a number of, let's call them, single-family residences, right? I mean, you could it's the appearance on the outside, it's got a door, it's got windows, it's got bedrooms, it's got a living room. Uh, it may or may not have multiple rooms. Now, most, just about every single structure since the seventies has been remodeled to do a number of things. I know every structure I bought in Saldovia, I have remodeled it or repurposed, reconfigured to make it work for either a business purpose that I want to do, or for a living purpose, or a combination of both. Um, so yeah, I'm, I'm not trying to get wrapped to everybody too around the axle, but I just, I, I'm trying to figure that out. I mean, what how it all, how it all makes, makes sense here, so. That's fine, we can, we can keep going. I don't, I don't want to get us off, off track here.
Okay, thank you, Mr. Mayor. Um, and then so adding language to long-term residential rental that if in the commercial business district, an administrative permit is required. So that was added to the definition for long-term residential rental on page 15, and there you'll see the um, definitions which have already been discussed for lodging. So those are separate from definitions for, for dwelling. Um, with dwelling being a non, non-financial, non-business type of use, where lodging is a business type of use. So that's the, the main distinguishment there. And then uh, language in the setback definition that they shall not allow snow to shed on public or private property. And so that definition of setback is on page 20, setback building, you'll see the last sentence on bold on, and I'm sorry, in bold and underlined, eaves and overhang shall not exceed 24 inches into the setback and shall not allow for snowshed on public or neighboring properties. And then an update for the language for CB district incidental uses building coverage, and this was definitely a tricky one. Um, and so hoping that this meets that need. Um, and looking at some other examples and thinking through what the intent there is. On page 23, incidental secondary uses, having that language instead of the 50%, and that's et crossed out to show that um, using language from, I believe this was Seward, uh, similar language that an incidental secondary use that exceeds the gross floor area occupied by the primary permitted use within the building or structure requires. Again, here you see that administrative approval, and that is under 18.18 that it talks about this by the city manager in accordance with SMC 1818020. And that's where that business license piece comes in. If you have a business license and it is approved by the city manager to occupy that business within that space and it exceeds or it's less than your gross floor for your residence, then you're approved. Um, and just having that discussion uh, so that when we're looking at people that are wanting to build or expand, you know, we're having that discussion of setting them up and setting future property owners up for success, that these buildings should have a designated area for business space, depending on, you know, what type of business that is. Uh, the other part of that is including some of those parameters for the city manager to approve. Um, so that's subject to the following findings, that the proposed incidental secondary use will not adversely, adversely impact the character pedestrian orientation or business vitality of the central business district that the use is consistent with the goals and policies of the comprehensive plan and the business district. The adequate parking access and services are available to support both the primary and secondary uses. And that the structure retains the physical capacity necessary to accommodate a future return to a primary permitted use. So thoughts on that?
Heidi, I, I, for me, I have a question. On, on the snowshed, on eve setbacks,
Mm-hmm.
is it the eve? Is, so it doesn't shed snow. So in other words, if you had a 20-foot eve, could you go within the five feet of the property line that?
You can go, two feet of your eve can go within the setback. But it can't shed into the road or your neighboring property.
So what is a setback distance?
It depends on property line and district. So perhaps it, it, there's a, a variety of differences between districts. Uh, most of them are five, six, or 10 is the general, and it depends on if it's a, a property line.
But regardless, if it was to shed, even if it was a 10-foot setback and it would just shed snow beyond that, then that's not permitted.
Exactly. Yeah, so don't, don't shed on your neighbors.
Yeah, I get, I mean,
Or in the street.
Common sense, but I just, yeah, okay.
Other thoughts? Do we need a minute before going on?
Can I ask you a question?
Yes.
Real quick, just find it, we're moving fast here. So um, lodging, short-term accommodation. Okay, if you go to number 47, I'm just trying to use it in my own example here. Number 47, lodging, hotel, motel.
Mm-hmm.
So a building, a group of buildings containing more than five guest rooms or individual dwelling units. So then if I, if I want to look up, first thing I want to do is look up individual dwelling units, right?
Mm-hmm.
I go back to 28. And we changed a bunch of things here, so we now have we have dwelling, large apartment complex, um, okay, we have dwelling unit, dwelling unit itself was crossed out.
Mm-hmm.
That's been done away with. So how does that work? If we just referenced a dwelling unit, but dwelling unit is now crossed out?
Hmm.
So I, I, I know it's supposed to make sense here, but this is what I'm saying. This is what I'm trying to just make sure that as you start cross-referencing everything and you actually, and it refers back to something, you literally have to follow the, the breadcrumb trail here to make sure that everything flows from one definition and pulls in the other definition, and then it flows over to the land use table.
Yeah, absolutely, Mr. Mayor.
So, dwelling unit, okay.
Mr. Mayor, I think Harmony had her hand up earlier.
Yeah, yep, go ahead, Harmony.
Yeah, I was just wondering about um, enforcement or uh, communication with, communication with landowners when they have roofs that are shedding into the street. I have two homes in my neighborhood that do that. Um, and that's just part of, you know, I live in an older neighborhood with narrow roads, you know. I'm just wondering, you know, we're not gonna have people disassemble their structure. So what is our reasonable approach for enforcing these types of um, pieces to our code?
Through the mayor, thank you for that question. Uh, so we have addressed this um, in the past multiple times. Uh, and if we are made aware of the issue, and I believe one of them was in your neighborhood, so if that hasn't been addressed, uh, definitely, uh, let's verify that, confirm it, and uh, what we've done. uh, is send out letters to individuals, um, just letting them know that uh, that needs to be remedied. Um, and suggesting, you know, snow shields or some uh, form of barrier to prevent that from happening in the future. So we do already have a form letter for that and that process is already in place. Um, so let's definitely look at that, that neighborhood this winter and make sure that if uh, those letters needs to be resent that they are, or if they haven't been sent um, to whatever specific individual that they are.
Perfect. Yeah, I'm not trying to, I'm just calling out what I see on a day-to-day basis. I'm not trying to call out my neighbors. And I, I think one of them was probably has inadequate, whatever the ratio is for height and whatever. And we just had that one crazy winter, but that one crazy winter met snow is shedding and like slamming across the road and um, but I don't know that it's, it's occurred since. It's just one of those, you know, again, I, we live on hills, narrow streets, perfect conditions make for perfect things. But um, I was just curious how we went about that, because again, I, you know, I got to proponent for uh, I don't know. Yeah, I wouldn't want to like, I just didn't know. I appreciate it. Thank you.
Absolutely. And then so the last piece, um, the last significant change uh, that was requested, when it's not, it's not really significant. Um, and they are too significant in nature is that addressing that storage facility piece and making that show that the storage facility was secondary in the commercial business district. Um, not the uh, the unit, the one uh, it's not right in front of me. Sorry, I'll pull it up here. Not the mini facility. So mini facility is not permitted. Um, and then the storage facility is secondary. So those um, were what came out of the last discussion and um, happy to go through some more exercises and uh, address that missing piece of the dwelling unit um, piece for motels, hotels, um, but also yes, work on anything else that comes up that you guys see. And there is a summary of those changes. Uh, again, below on that memo on, starting on page three, uh, crossing over to four and five. And the last thing I was going to say, um, which I almost reverted back to at the beginning of this discussion is the whereas, whereas is um, more updated on ordinance on page six, uh, to make sure that we are calling out that incidental secondary use as well as um, the, the short-term accommodation uh, for lodging is changing to permitted primary use, which is, that was already in there. Um, but just trying to make sure that we call out some of those significant changes or any of the significant changes. And the land use table was reformatted, that one, not necessarily as significant, as significant, but also then that last whereas that administrative approvals and permits chapter was included with that process.
Vivian, you had your hand up?
Yes, I do. Um, yeah, uh, going through this exercise, which has been a long time coming. And there's a lot of work done here, but I'm um, I guess my question is uh, from those, as you spoke to the, the concern Heidi in the beginning, is we had complaints, we had concerns, we had misinformation that people didn't know how to move on uh, our definitions, and hopefully we're clarifying that. Um, but I guess one thing I, I'm asking or I'm wondering where Jeremiah is coming from, because he's one of the users. And so we want to make sure that the businesses, the individuals who are building, that they can look and come down to the city and get their answers answered and clarification is simply, is simple. That's what our whole goal has been. And so I guess I would ask, as the city staff looks at it, do you, have you come up with any concerns of what we've got so far? Are you pleased with what we have so far? And individuals such as Jeremiah and other businesses where a lot of this confusion seems to linger. Have we, have we addressed those concerns and, and made it clear for people to understand what we have documented in our ordinances? And it's a, I appreciate all the work we've done, but I guess I'm with Jeremiah. If we, it's like what we do, used to do at school and, and courses. We'd run a kid through all the, the, our schedule and see, does it work for this kid? Does this one work for this kid? Well, I guess the same thing would be the same thing with every business owner or individual. Will what we have is understandable and will work for them? So I guess, long story short, Heidi, are you feeling comfortable with what we've got drafted in front of us? And then letting people know that when they come to the city office, hopefully it'll be clear cut, there won't be all the confusion that we've had in the past. And um, so I guess I, I wanted to hear where our mayor thinks we are with it and the city staff. Thank you, Mr. Mayor.
Yeah, thank you, Vivian.
Do you want me to take that first, Mr. Mayor?
Sure, sure.
Uh, so I uh, believe that it is a better product than we've previously had. I think it cleans up a lot of confusion and it has a lot of references back. Uh, and shortens the land use table, uh, better clarifies items. I don't think it's perfect, and I don't know that we'll ever have a perfect document because there's always going to be scenarios that are outside of the box. Um, which I, so I'm glad that there is an administrative approval process in there. Um, and, and I, and I do think that there are it's always a, oh, it's a working document, right? The, the code of ordinances, our budget, these things that we do are continual improvement items. So um, I would be mistaken if I said it's going to fix all of the problems and it's going to be the best working document there ever was. I do think it's the best working document that we've had. Um, and it is better than what we are currently using and that a lot of time and effort has been put into this uh, between the planning commission and the subcommittee and staff. I believe this process started back in oh, I don't have the date on here, but it was, it's been two years. It's been a while, um, through, through several different groups. Uh, and still, like Mr. Mayor, you just pointed out with that, um, with that long, long, or sorry, that run, the hotel motels, um, there's still things that do come up. Uh, there's less of them and as things come up in the future, I'm confident that we can continue to update them and uh, and can continuing improving this draft. And I, and I'm confident that maybe the mayor and I can sit down and run through any other scenarios he sees. I have tried to run through pretty much every scenario I can think of, um, specific, specific to that district. Uh, and do feel like it is, fits the parameters of the will of the subcommittee. Uh, Cola Collier did carry on through that entire committee and through all of the discussions. Uh, at the planning commission level, I think at the first meeting that she back to this document. And it's been a, a great spokesperson uh, for somebody in that district. Um, but I guess overall, you, I, could there be errors? Sure. Um, I, are there less? Yes. Uh, is it better? Yes. I'm, I'm really hoping that this document does simplify things and that as we continue working forward, we can continue with that, with those improvements.
Yeah, Heidi, I'll just add on to that. Then, I mean, I, I agree with, yeah, ninety-nine percent of that, right? I think we've done a good job on trying to capture the intent and the will of what the community wants. Uh, what the stakeholders want, what the plant, you know, planning wants. Um, you know, for something that we can plan for in the future to keep our central business. Um, you know, district in intact down there. Uh, I just want to make sure I, yeah, I just want to make sure the intent is there, I know. It just comes down to the language, right? We've had a lot of iterations of this. And I just want to make sure that we've got, you know, we, we look at some of those type things where we're referencing back to something and just give it the, give it the gut check, you know, any, any council member, anyone could just pick any property and run it, run it through its paces based on what you see as a, you know, as a council member or a citizen. Take a look at a property, see if it meets the definitions, the intent, run it through the land use table and say, okay, yeah. Pretend you were buying that property and you wanted to use it for something down there, right? Run it through the paces to make sure that it, it makes sense based on the new, the new updates to the code. So um, yeah, other than that, I mean, it's just generally, yeah, it's, it should be a huge improvement over, over where we at, where we were at. And um, yeah, definitely won't be perfect. Hopefully what we can do though is if we, you know, if problems are brought up and we see issues, then we, you know, but we got another week here before it come. I, it's going to be on our next meeting, right? Is that the intent, Heidi?
The intent is to introduce it Monday and then public hearing on August twenty-fifth. However, if that's not the will of the body, we can take it back and continue working on it or uh, set a, a introduction at a later date.
Okay, no, and I think we're getting close here. So I think we've got a couple of opportunities of, if we do find the thing to make some, you know, some very simple administrative uh, changes. I think it's been vetted enough times through the, the committee process, planning, uh, et cetera, uh, to where hopefully some folks from the general public will weigh in, you know, if they see something. And then if, if anyone else runs it through its paces and finds something, let's get it out in front of the staff so we can address it. Make sure we're meeting the intent with the language and then uh, get it fixed and move on here.
And Mr. Mayor, I am remiss, I should have included that our uh, timing commission chair, Randy Sweet is here. If you guys have any questions for her as well.
Yeah, no, sounds, sounds good. I, I see Randy sitting over there, so. Yeah, Randy, if you want to offer, I mean, if you, yeah, anytime you feel free to chime in, if you've got something that, that pops up. So I think um, yep, we're, we're open and willing to listen here, so.
Okay.
Go ahead.
Nope.
I was going to say if um, yeah, where, where does that leave us then? Do we, we got more to go through?
That's it, Mr. Mayor, on that topic, um, unless you guys have more.
Okay, any other questions, comments from council as we work, uh, work through this? Okay, do we have anyone from the public at all that wanted to weigh in? I'm not sure if there's anyone online, Liz?
No, Mr. Mayor, we don't have anybody online to speak.
Okay. Yeah, so then um, you know, that would be my, my closing comments is just for council to, you know, look through this once again between now and next week, um, run it through its paces. So you know, try, try to poke holes in it ultimately. That's what you want to do. You want to try to poke holes in it to see if, you know, if it sticks or uh, if it's, if it's pretty solid. And if, you know, if it's, if it's Swiss cheese, then we got problems. If there's a couple of things here or there that we can clean up administratively, then we're, then we're good. So um, yeah, that's, that's what I want to do. And then I'll, I'll, you know, get with you guys, Heidi and Liz, if I see anything. And then uh, yeah, we'll try to get it, you know, uh, so that we can, uh, if we need to talk about it prior to introduction. Um, then that's, that's, it's an easy one that we can do, so.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor.
Okay, we want to move on to the se- second topic then, which is the draft ordinance twenty-six dash XX uh, regarding the uh, abatement um, ordinance.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. Uh, so this starts, and it looks like the page numbers disappeared, um, which is strange. After the um, commercial business district ordinance, but about midway through your packet, packet after the long-term residential rental business permit. Uh, there is a memorandum in here on the draft ordinance updating abatement guidance and procedure procedures for chapter eight zero six abandoned property. Uh, updating these procedures has been an ongoing topic in Saldovia since at least twenty twenty-one. This started with my predecessor who sent a request to legal uh, to help us work through this process. Uh, we've been uh, working with legal off and on since. They did provide a draft ordinance uh, a couple of months ago that went to the planning commission for their initial review. Um, updating that eight zero six abandoned property. And so if you see, and they, they had provided some, legal did, they provided a, an initial rough draft and that just updated our code. Um, and then they also provided Wasilla, Houston and Homer's uh, codes for the planning commission to review. The planning commission did have comments that came out of that and it went back to legal. Uh, and then they provided this final um, draft for review uh, that starts on the following page and does still use our existing um, code and uh, section for the most parts, but hmm, updates to the limits overall. And so you'll see that on, it becomes instead of abandoned property, we're expanding and really abandoned property had a focus on cars. So we're expanding that focus on cars and how to abate or um, remove a public nuisance with a car to uh, other properties. And you'll see that under, starting the next page for definitions. Um, that defining that abandon or abandonment, the junk vehicle, um, junk vehicle parts, and then junk, trash and city limits. So uh, something of interest here was that city limits does include, um, you know, we're talking about all of city limits here, private and public property. And having a process in place for nuisances uh, that do occur on both private and public property and what that looks like. So uh, going down through this language, after you look at the definitions, um, you know, and it just expands out that those prop, those um, that language referring to to a property from vehicle to property where junk or trash as defined in zero eight zero six one is disposed of scattered upon or stored, kept in plain view from any public right-of-way easement or other lands within city limits for over, for an excess of thirty days. So expanding it, not just a car, but if you have um, again, junk or trash that is disposed of scattered upon or stored and then some plain view um, from a right-of-way easement or other lands within city limits. Um, there's a process in place. Uh, also, uh, junk and trash declared public nuisance, property on which the following conditions exist. I guess that uh, a public nuisance detrimental to the health, safety and welfare of the inhabitants of the city is, is where we really start that, um, that discussion. And then um, going down into uh, you know, it just kind of becomes more excessive property, property or junk vehicles, junk vehicle parts, junk or trash or within plain view from any um, you know, that's a duplicate there. Nope, it's abandoned. Just junk or trash is defined, and then the next one is abandoned property, sorry. And then the uh, C is property where trash, garbage, animal waste or other, I can't say that word, pretressible wastes are stored in a manner which creates public hazard. Uh, and then abandoned buildings, which is something I know that's been talked about as well. Um, from some of the council members. So except those that have been boarded up at all doors, windows and other openings sufficiently to prevent ingress or otherwise secured. And then going, following through it more, um, you know, no person shall allow, maintain, permit a public nuisance to exist on lands within city limits. So again, talking all lands, but the city has to meet a burden of proof for a public nuisance of the items consisting of public nuisance. So we have to be able to have that um, that burden of proof to enact um, the abatement procedures and um, that we shall meet that burden of proof. Um, if there's a reason to believe that by action or inaction, the property owner has failed to correct a serious health or a safety violation at or near any building or on a surrounding property is also part of it. So. Uh, then going into investigation and abatement of public nuisance, I hope you guys are, are following along. Oh, and Liz has it up, so that's great. Uh, the city manager may investigate any abandoned property, junk vehicle or area with accumulated junk and trash to determine if the subject items constitute a public nuisance. And then this is that part of having the burden of proof. Uh, the city manager's determination shall include finding supporting the decision. Upon determination that the public nuisance exists, the city manager or the designee may issue an enforcement order consistent with the municipal code in accordance with chapter eight zero six to the owner of the abandoned property junk vehicle. to the owner of the abandoned property junk vehicle or property where junk or trash has accumulated. Uh nothing in this section shall be construed to let the right of the city to pursue common law remedies to some to summarily abate a public nuisance. And then follows down to the next section of enforcement orders and discusses uh that we can require provision of a visual screen, removal of the hazard and nuisance relocation, containment remediation, decontamin- decontamination and other measures authorized under this chapter. Removal of the abandoned property junk vehicle chat junk or trash may also be appropriate and is subject to the process described in eight zero six zero six zero. Talks about what that enforcement order looks like, um that it has uh thirty days for the property to become come into compliance unless otherwise stipulated in writing. And um follows again previous code about uh the abatement or removal of developed structures and materials as we discussed, discontinuation, restoration. Again, what those processes could be in order to remediate the process. Uh following the next page, the enforcement order shall be noticed. Failure to abide by an enforcement order constitutes a violation uh to debate an eme- an eminent or existing public nuisance or hazard to public health, safety or welfare. An enforcement order does not need to be issued before any lawful actions commence. So if it's a health hazard, um we can go in before uh and remedy before uh uh before an enforcement order is issued. And the penancy of any proceeding regarding an enforcement order issued does not stay any other legal action with respect to the violation that is subject of the enforcement order. So carrying through on what that process looks like again, I don't know if you guys want me to read every piece, but I can, and then what those so civil remedies are. Um and that includes the sale, well, first a violation of this code may be enjoined or abated pursuant to Alaska statute twenty nine twenty five zero seven zero B upon application for injunctive relief and a finding that a person is violating or threatening to violate this code, the superior court shall enjo- enjoin the violation. And um be any partitioned sale, transfer or lease of property that creates a subdivision of land in violation of this code may be enjoined. So this is all the the civil remedies and penalties um in the legal realm there. And talking about injunctive or competence competent, uh can't say that word either, sorry, I'm really tired of last night. Um relief, uh civil penalty not exceeding five hundred dollars for each violations. And then following into the next section, notice to property owner of violation of ordinance and demand for removal just goes through that process of upon finding a public nuisance or other prohibited acts, we'll give written notice. Uh the person or owner subject to notice and demand for removal under the section may appeal removal, and this one I'm not necessarily a fan of, but I understand where it makes sense that um and that removal of the property by city action to recover removal costs. Uh the city manager may, after given giving the notice, and this was already in the code in particular to cars, um but we're saying um this expanded, it also applies to the expanded version um of public nuisance that the city manager may, after giving the notice required by section eight zero six zero zero six zero, and after waiting thirty days, have the property removed by the city or by a commercial entity to any suitable place for disposal of rubbish and unsightly debris for disposal or for storage and impounding. If the owner is unknown, um and the property in violation of the ordinance may be removed immediately and notice is not required. Again, the city manager may file an action in the name of the city is appropriate to the court. And then a language for notice of a removal redemption remains the same. Sale of property removed under this ordinance remains the same authorized, it's author, you know, what those authorizations are. Uh and I believe that follows sta- statute as well. And then fairly similar or same sale and hearing notice requirements, though those are updated uh to current requirements of uh thirty, ten and twenty days, contents of sales, sale, empowerment fees, so those things are already there. And then exceptions, this section does not apply to the following activities if they are operating in accordance with other applicable municipal codes, commercial or public storage facilities, junk salvage yards, refuse areas, landfills, trash transfer sites and septic waste facilities, inoperative and unlicensed vehicles that are located on the premises of illegally operating motor vehicle sale, service and repair business if the vehicles are subject to an active repair order and will be removed within a reasonable timeframe. Uh so that is um that again from legal reviewed by planning commission, uh still a little bit of a mouthful, but does provide uh those legal proceedings of uh what is in the purview of the city in um in the case of dealing with a public nuisance. And open for any questions. Thank you, Mr. Mayor.
Okay, thank you, Heidi. Uh yeah, lots to lots to chew on there for sure, so. Any questions, comments so far by anyone on council?
Mr. Mayor, if I may?
Yeah, go ahead, Vivian.
Yeah, um. Where do I start? Uh yeah, it's good information that we've got attached to this document. And it's, as we said earlier, work in progress. But I think we're um we're actually defining what we need to do. We've had many complaints at different times about uh junk in people's yard, and of course, that's always in question what somebody's junk is another person's uh gold coin. So I think having a document that we can rely on uh to guide us through a complaint that may come in from a citizen about their neighbor or or whatever it might be, or on city property or private property. Uh either way, we need to have something, a document that guides us. And I think this is doing a good job uh the enforcement concept. Is that through? How does that happen? Could you explain to me what we have that, how that would work?
Through the mayor, yes, thank you. So that starts with us writing a a letter of notice. And then um if there it is not remedied within thirty days. Um and we can provide suggestions in that letter, you know, if they just need to screen it off, they need to remove things, um what that looks like. Uh but um following any inaction, then there's those civil remedies and penalties that can go um to the superior court uh stipu- stipulating um that violation and ensuring that it it's it's taken care of. So that's the next step. If they if they don't follow city ordinance or code, then it goes uh goes to the superior court.
Okay, so it would not be with our VPSO, but it would be state troopers or somebody giving paper?
It could be, it could be with VPSO. I mean, uh um the that would be the first probably initial enforcement order with they could assist us in placing that, yes. Uh but it's one that one that is not initially followed than that next step. Uh and we do have a a an enforcement order constitutes a violation of the Sodovia municipal code and subject to a minor offense fine schedule, uh you know, so that's five hundred dollars a day as it does describe in this. So we can start issuing fines as part of that process. Um and we can sell property, that way we can recover any um any damages or costs revol- of resulting or related to the violation. Um in addition, we can, as I, as we stated, uh seek relief um from the superior court, a civil penalty not exceeding five hundred dollars. I'm sorry, that does have to be from this um that does have to be from the court, that's us, a civil penalty not exceeding five hundred, so that's that fine piece. Uh so first the fee schedule, first the letter, then the fee schedule. And then if we need to, we can move it into the realm of the courts.
Okay.
Or oh, take or remove things ourselves.
Go on private property and do that?
It says it in here, yep.
That's what I thought I read. Okay.
Yep.
And um so if there was a complaint, somebody had to complain about their neighbor, they would take that to the city and then when it lands on your desk, you would go to the property, analyze it, see what's going on, and then from there decide if a documentation needs to be sent out to the property owner. Is that how that would work?
Correct.
Okay. Okay. Okay, thank you.
Can I ask a question, Heidi?
Yes.
How, just for example, I mean, do you guys get a lot of complaints on that would fall into an abatement category for like more than two or three of the same properties in Sodovia? Or is it generally, I mean, I'm just curious, I drive around and I see maybe a couple of pro, I mean, I see a couple of properties, it definitely could use some cleanup, right? I mean, so I, I mean, my concern is kind of what Vivian was going on to, just making sure that, you know, this isn't a tool for one neighbor to use against another because they don't like the color of your fence, or they don't like the shape of your house, or they don't, you know, the fact that you've got, you know, a a car that's been parked there for a while that you're working on. I mean, you know what I'm, you know what I'm getting at.
Right, which
The petty type stuff that's just gonna be a kind of a nuisance to your to your job.
Right, thank you, Mr. Mayor. So no, um we do get a lot of complaints about just a couple of properties. Um and but they're the the same ones over and over again. We don't get um in general, a lot of prop, a lot of complaints about uh properties in general in the community.
A lot of different properties.
Yeah, no, we don't get that. Um So and that's why I like under the purpose and definitions that it does lay out a list of what abandoned or abandonment is as well as what junk vehicle is, you know, so it talks about in each one of them, there's, you know, abandoned or abandonment, there's six different things um listed under it to have it qualify, you know, those are the set of conditions. Um under junk vehicle, there's three um hmm junk and junk vehicle parts, trash, they provide a a what uh of of fairly um consistent and I feel um easily read uh examples of what those items could be. So as we're not just making this up, you know, a junk junk means buildings, walls, fences, sheds, yard furnishing towers, sports equipment, construction materials, storage containers, trailers and other structures which have been damaged by dismantling, fire, wind, water erosion, subs- subsident uh subsidence, snow load, vandalism, neglect, collision or any other cause to such an extent that they cannot be used for the original purpose without significant repair or alteration, or has been declared unsafe by the state of Alaska or the city. The definition of junk also includes hazardous materials, either solid, liquid or gases, including but not limited to batteries, waste oil or other vehicle fluids, CFCs, HCFS and related compounds. So it's not um, you know, I can't just go and claim anything's junk. There is a a list of what qualifies and what condition it's in to qualify as junk. Like getting for trash means garbage, damaged, spoiled, discarded or wasted tangible material, including but not limited to food, containers, paper products, cloth, fabric, plastics, glass, wood or metal, household items, waste byproducts, manure, liquids or other effluent which are not intended for reuse or are no longer suitable for the original use without major repair or reprocessing any tangible material that is by evidence of its location and disposition discarded or treated as waste. So um I I don't think this should be taken lightly by any means and that there are a set of parameters uh for what is considered abandoned or junk or trash. Uh and that was needs to be very carefully looked at um and a determination made before we go through this process.
Well, I think you bring up a good point on that because in a number of cases where the the places I'm thinking of, there's a lot of good stuff, you know, I I know what what's usable and what's junk, you know, what's not usable. Uh but some stuff may be in a state of disrepair. Um but yeah, that that's where it gets interesting, right? Where like Vivian was saying, one man's treasure is another man's junk. Uh so yeah, you have you have to be real careful on that. It's just the fact that there might be a lot of it that, you know, makes it look unsightly, obviously. So um, okay, no, that um, yeah, this will, this will be good. Um it'll be interesting and probably much, well, I know it's much needed because I've had a number of folks come to me as well. Um, you know, asking about cleanup of certain spaces and um, yeah, it'll be nice to get something going here and then hopefully get up, you know, get people on board so that we can start getting some of the some of these issues taken care of. Any other questions, comments by anyone on council?
Hi, Mr. Mayor.
Yeah, go ahead, Jack.
I know where some of this is coming from. Um Preston's property over there is encroachment. And I think there's probably a couple of other places, I think that they've the people need to keep their vehicles on their property and not on public property or public right-of-ways or roadways. And but I don't want to see something drafted to where if I have a classic vehicle sitting in my yard, it would be considered the same thing as junk either, even though it's maybe not roadworthy at the moment. So I I I don't know where this is going, but um I don't want to bite too hard on some of this stuff because like Vivian said, some people junked somebody's else's fortune. But I think the encroachment, when you step outside of your property, that's one of the things that we should surely address if you're letting your junk go outside of your own property.
Harmony?
Yeah, uh, thank you, Mr. Mayor. I kind of agree with Jack on this one. Um I think that there is definitely a need in our code and language for addressing um real problems. I think that um this as a a first draft is probably pretty good, but I do think it it adds quite a bit of room for interpretation for what one person might consider a public health hazard to another. Um and when something is declared a public nuisance, I don't know, I I I like the idea that of um maybe providing people with the opportunity to screen in their own chaos. Uh yeah, I've heard about this a couple of times in the community and um I think that people will need to take the time to read through this more thoroughly to have a better appreciation for the intent here. Because like what um Ms. Ross and the mayor had mentioned before, it's not, it's not written with the intent of creating a vehicle for um nitpicking each other. But I just like, uh I I think that um going forward with the intention of having like really specific and easy to understand definitions so that everyone, you know, we're not wasting each other's time uh by attacking each other. I don't know, I, yeah, I've already heard from a couple of people who are like, you know, like Jack just mentioned, he has a classic vehicle on his property that isn't roadworthy. I have a airstream that my dead brother bought four years ago that I, you know, like, I don't know what to do with because it's not my it's not my, you know, thing, but I don't want to get rid of it, but also it's not roadworthy. It's could totally be declared junk. You know, we're all a little bit sensitive about one little piece in our corners and um, yeah, fleshing this out with the community and making making people aware of the intent here, I think is going to be really helpful for making this a good uh positive uh piece of uh code. Because it it there's, there certainly is a time and place for coding like this. Thank you, uh staff for putting this together.
Thanks, Harmony. Anyone else?
Looks like Randy has a comment.
I guess, I guess what I would um I guess focus on is um having a process that has been benchmarked on legal, a legal framework, um which I think this this does provide a starting point. And then um that also includes um That also includes, um. Individuals' property rights so that, that we're creating a framework that addresses problems. That we honor people's property rights and that we work together to make that. Happen where it's, you know, where everybody can look at it and go, yes, this is appropriate. That we can solve problems that exist and if they exist and there's a process to do it, that's fair. And respectful of individual rights. So I, I think if we can. Focus on that, then we should be able to take care of any concerns in terms of. Um, any, any particular situation. And then. I would also kind of not go on specific, any, any specific person in the community, just. Let's really, uh, pull that up and really look at, do we have the right process? Where we can solve problems in our community and we make sure that we're respecting individual rights. And if we do that. Then as we implemented, if there's any problems, we should fix the process, but let's make sure that we have a good process so that. We can solve problems fairly and adequately. Thank you.
Yeah, thank you, Randy.
Mr. Mayor, if I just made one word?
Yeah, go ahead, Vivian.
Yeah, yeah, I, yeah, I would agree with, uh, what, uh, what was just said. And, um, I think I support this document that we're, this ordinance are going to move forward to the public. Uh, process and it is something that we need to have down in our ordinances that helps us. Uh, and gives us a, a method to accomplish what we have to do as a city. So I'm in support of this and moving into the public like. Thank you, Mr. Mayor.
Yeah, thank you, Vivian. Hey Heidi, I have one question. Under, uh. Under junk vehicle, um, where, where did that definition come from? Was that a? State definition or municipal definition from somewhere else?
Uh, yes, Mr. Mayor, um. That was provided by legal, so I can go back and ask that.
Okay, I would just be. I'd be a little concerned over that one because there's a, um, that. That could take into account any number of vehicles in Sodovia? Even the good vehicles? When you start reading through that, um. Yeah, um, especially the bottom part that, uh. All where it says also has one or more of the following character. Well, number one, registration, there's a lot of vehicles that aren't properly registered. Um. Um, and then a number of those that are inoperable due to mechanical failure has not been repaired because of mechanical difficulties. That's pretty broad. Uh, there's a lot of vehicles that are sitting because they have not been repaired because of mechanical difficulties. Or because the cost of repairs exceeds the fair market value of the vehicle. Well, in our case, most of our repairs these days on an older vehicle are going to exceed the value of the vehicle. Simple as that. Um, and then if you get down into also has one or more of the following, the vehicle is missing glass or has broken glass. I don't think there's like less than one percent of vehicles in Sodovia that don't have broken glass. Um, the, uh, man, most of them have all their wheels and tires. That's generally pretty safe. Uh, the vehicle is missing body panels or drivetrain components. Um, yeah, we have a fair number that are missing, missing both body panels and drivetrain components. So. I would just be concerned about this one. If this was something that. Somebody Googled or used AI or something because it encompasses a lot of our vehicles. So, um, just want to, just wanted to point that one out. I got kind of a chuckle on that one. I started going down that one. So that includes vehicles, trailers, snow machines, four wheelers, motorcycles, farm equipment, et cetera. So. Yeah, not asking to do any, but just maybe take a look if you can, go back and find out where, where that came from, if, if, if that's, you know, truly. Time tested or if it's something that's, that's new.
Will do, Mr. Mayor.
All right. Was there anyone online? Anyone else, Liz, that, uh, wanted to comment on the abatement ordinance?
No, there are no members of the public online at the moment.
Okay. Sounds good. Um, last chance for council. Any other thoughts? Um, comments on the abatement ordinance? Okay, well, I think, uh, let's see, is this one going to be introduced at the next meeting also, Heidi?
Uh, that was the intent unless you would like us to refer back for more work. If you have, there's, um, anything specific other than. Looking at where the definition is, we could look at other examples. Um. I don't know, it's up to council. If you're not fully satisfied with this, we could have another work session in the future and look at those other. Code ordinances or, um, if you want to have this moved forward, it can be introduced Monday.
Okay. Yeah, I mean, I'm, I'm fine with it being introduced. Um, if we get, you know, a little bit more information before then, or if. Uh, folks are looking at it and have some, you know, issues with some specifics, uh, you know, then we could certainly, um. Talk about that. So yeah, and obviously everything's online for the public to see. And then when it's noticed as for introduction, more folks should, uh, take notice and hopefully give us some, um. Some additional input when we have the public hearing, so. Okay, um, well, thanks, everyone. I don't see that we have anything else tonight on the agenda. Um, any other closing comments from anyone before we adjourn tonight? All right, sounds good. Thanks, everyone. And we will go ahead and adjourn the work session for today.
Okay, good night, everyone.
All right. Thanks, everyone.
Thank you, everyone.